Okay, is everybody ready to go? Not that you are or not, but it's cold outside, so hopefully we're all ready to go. All right. This is the town, I'm calling to order the town board meeting for the town of St. Joseph on December 12th of 2024 at 6:02. Statement of public notice, Terry.
Hereby provided our written notice in the agenda of the public meeting as stated below. There's an opportunity for public comment as noted on the agenda upon recognition by the presiding officer.
Roll call, Chris and Dan and I are here in the room and Justin is online with us and Matt is not able to be here tonight due to a work commitment. So I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
And make a motion to adopt the agenda for December 12th, 2024.
That's okay, you got ahead of them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that passes. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the upcoming meetings in advance. There's not much on this calendar through our next town board meeting. Parks, Trails and Rec and Technology both canceled their December meetings. The office is closed three days at the end of this month for Christmas and New Year's Eve. Otherwise, our next meeting is on January 9th. Reports, all your reports are in your drive. Did anyone have any questions concerning those reports? Our fire chief is here along with our zoning administrator. All right, we are going to move on. Public comment. Does anyone want to make a comment about something that is not on the agenda tonight? Anyone online want to make a comment on something that is not on the agenda? All right, we'll move on. The first thing we have in front of us is a lot line adjustment for Jeffrey and Robin Wiffle. At 1181 60th Street, combining the Outlot 3 from Artisan Farm Platt to the Lot 1 CSM. Who's here on behalf of that? Okay, turn the mic on.
What he just explained is pretty much it in a nutshell. So making that one out of like kind of a odd piece of property on Artisan Farm. The cul-de-sac is on part of it.
Yes.
And we're just adding that, that all lot to Wiffle's original lot. Pretty much it in a nutshell.
And this in essence gives them access.
Well, they have access. I mean, they have the even across this outlot, but now they'll just own the outlot.
They'll own it. Anyone have any questions for Doug on this?
I only have curiosity. Why wasn't that done as part of the original plat? I mean, why did, why did we even create that little outline?
Because it was part of the property that we subdivided, so it was just a little remnant piece. This, you know, the Waffles are different owners, so I didn't want to have two owners on the plat, but we wanted to make the lot, Waffles lot part of the plat.
All right, that's fine.
Because they've had that lot for many years.
Yeah.
And used an easement to get across. And you, and you just felt it was cleaner. Yep. Anyone have any other questions for him? Otherwise, does anyone want to make a motion on this lot line adjustment?
I'll make a motion for the lot line adjustment for Jeffrey and Robin Wiffle. At 1181 60th Street to combine the lots, Outlot 3 from Artisan Farm Platt to Lot 1 CSM.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. The next thing on our agenda is the lot line adjustment for Jen Holland on 451 147th Avenue, combining Lot 19 and 20 of Pioneer Ridge. Is anyone here on behalf of these, of Jen Holland? All right, this is combining two lots in the Pioneer Ridge subdivision. Can I ask you a quick question since I know you don't represent them? When you're changing a lot in a plat, do you have to also file against that plat to show that you don't? Okay. All right, just asking. Anyone want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion for a lot line adjustment for Jen Holland. At 451 147th Avenue to combine Lot 19 and Lot 20 of Pioneer Ridge.
Right, but 147th Avenue is a physical address of the parcel, and that's what we have to put on the lot, on the agenda.
Okay.
We don't put her home address, we put the address of the parcel. Yep. Anything else from anyone? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, it passes. And then the lot line adjustment for number three of Gary Bowman for 15th Street. To combine Lot 15 and 16 of Drescher Heights. So this is an old, um, old subdivision. It's been there a long time and these two lots are there, but they're both, I would say, less, they're both less than three acres and even combined, they don't come to three acres, but that does make it a better lot to build on than what they're sitting on. Is anyone here for Gary Bowman? Justin Sheeler, are you part of this?
Yes, this is Justin Sheeler with Remax Results. I'm online.
Go ahead, and what is, he owns both of these now and he wants to combine them in one?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So Gary bought both lots. Originally, he was hoping that he could build on both, but with that minimum three acre requirements, even with both lots together, it wasn't doable. Fortunately, Jay has been super helpful in answering our million questions. And we're just hoping to combine those two lots into one larger lot, so that could be built on. That's it.
Well, it makes better sense than having these two teeny lots, that's for sure. So does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to lot line adjustment for Gary Bowman. For 15th Street, combining Lot number 15 and Lot number 16 of the Dreschler Heights.
Is there a second? Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you very much, Justin, for being on with us. We appreciate it.
Yes, thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
All right. Final plat of the Oaks of St. Croix, 361 44th Street with Steve Vader. He is here for this approval along with the reduction in the letter credit and there's been a resolving of the issues of who's paying what on 144th. I guess that's the best way to say it because we had some questions. All of us had some questions. So go ahead, you can start. Yep.
So this is the final plat. Still has the eight lots on it. Just the house, home, not a lot for. Everything's been soil tested for septic system. Basically, really out there other than asphalt on board four.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Can we have, Doug, can you take the mic a little closer to you so we can all hear you?
You can pull it right out there if you want.
There's a better.
Perfect.
So, um, yeah, this will be the final plat that'll create the lots when it's recorded, all the easements are, go along with it. And it's kind of in a nutshell. If you want to see what it was, so there was the, here's the preliminary plat.
Yep.
So you can see it looks, looks the same. Storm ponds, if you've been out there.
Yep.
You know, we got a big storm pond, it sits down in here. Drainage way that goes along the backside there.
I guess the only thing that I have since we're getting down to the bottom of it is Stan Tech turned in all your bills for this, that we don't have a bill out there next year for it, or?
We have our bills submitted through October. November bills just came in, so those are being worked on. There's more work to be done on the project. And there's been work this month, so there'll be another bill in January. But that's typical with developments that, you know, there's bills beyond.
So with, you know, I'm fine with the reduction of the letter of credit, but we're not giving it all back, or what are we doing there?
No. Go ahead.
Typically, on the letter of credit side of things, we keep the amount of what work is left. So, you know, the, the amount reflects how much work and how much cost the work left will be plus, plus 20%. So it's 120% of the cost that's left.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, because this is a ongoing relationship.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, and I have no prob, I mean, this is unusual for us to approve this final plat before asphalt. And I have no problem with that. If you're going to sell lots, obviously, if we have any outstanding bills, that will stand in the way of any building permits, which is how we've handled that in the past. So if any bills are more than 30 days late, we let our, you know, building inspector know, so he knows we have some outstanding numbers on this. I know you've been good about paying your bills, but I'm just informing you of that down the road. Yep.
Do we have an amount that I want to say off?
First of all, we have to approve the final plat.
Okay.
Then we'll take the letter of credit separate and the bill separate. So first of all, we have to do this. Does anyone else on the board have any questions for him on this final plat? Um, I'm going to make a quick, I'll, I'll try this. I will make a motion to approve the final plat for the Oaks of St. Croix at 361 44th Avenue for Steve Vader. Conditional upon him staying in good standing with the, the town of St. Joseph on paying his bills within the 30 days after they've been billed to him. And that he can sell those lots under this final plat, but that he will be responsible with the letter of credit that we have in place, but he will be responsible to make sure that this gets paved in the spring. And that any damages due to his plowing of that road will be corrected. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else anyone can think of that should have been included in that?
Who's going to be creating the punch list?
We will.
You will? Okay, correct. All right.
So we're not plowing it this winter because we've not taken the roads over because they're not paved. We've approved the final plat, but we've not taken the roads over.
Even though it's already a town road?
Huh? Well, our portion, our portion is, well, then we have to talk about that. The board's going to have to talk about that. And I can add that on to the motion. Do you want to plow the whole thing? We're going to have to plow part of it.
Well, I think just to get back to his residence for now.
Well, it gives, uh, it gives us a cul-de-sac which we didn't have before.
Yeah.
It'd be foolish not to plow the whole, but.
Right.
Yeah, how are you feeling about that? No, I'm looking at you.
Oh, that's completely up to the town.
Yeah. So I, I'll amend my motion to include that the town will plow that road for the winter. But that you're responsible if there's any damages done to the road by the snowplow. But that you're responsible if there's any damages done to the road by the snowplow. Who seconded mine?
I did, second.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that? I think that's a good alternative is that we plow it and if for any reason you need to add a little bit more gravel in some place, you're just going to have to do it. Okay. Okay. Hopefully it'll get hard enough with some frost that'll not plow away.
It did solid up a little bit after the rain, so.
It does help it. If there anything else from anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that was Justin that said aye, so opposed, motion carried. So then on the reduction to the letter of credit, you have yours in there, so you can speak to them as to what that is.
Certainly. Madam Chair, members of the board, um, as per policy, the developer has requested a reduction of the letter of credit for the roadway improvements. Um, the roadway improvements have been completed with the exception of paving and are in compliance with the approved plans and specs and town standards, uh, therefore it's recommended that the town reduce the developer's letter of credit related to those improvements. Uh, we recommend the reduced amount of the letter of credit to be a hundred and sixty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars uh, until such time we go back and more work is done and we can reduce it further.
Are you comfortable with that, Steve? Okay.
Some reduction or.
No, that will be the final balance.
That's the balance.
That's what remains.
Okay.
We're reducing it to that number.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to reduce the letter of credit for the Oaks of St. Croix for Steve Vader in an amount of to the amount of one hun- one hundred and sixty eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. So then the payment for one forty fourth, so we had some discussions about the engineering that took place on one forty fourth for our end of inspection as opposed to their end inspection, because if we were paving our road, we'd be paying the engineer for that. So you came up with some numbers to, um, to talk about that.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, there is a spreadsheet that was, uh, forwarded, I believe is in your drive. Uh, there are four invoices, um, that are a subject of this cost sharing. Two from ACA and two from Stan Tech. Uh, we went and looked through all of those invoices and picked out the eligible amount. Um, for cost share, for example, the Stan Tech invoices are for construction during construction, uh, construction part of the project. Um, you'll see on that spreadsheet that the entire amount isn't necessarily eligible. Um, because there was some inspection done on the, the developing part of the property in addition to just the road. So we, we kind of pulled those, those costs out and then, uh, you can see in that last column that we applied then the town's cost share, which is the forty six point six nine percent, which was set way back. Um, as far as what the town share was, which results in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and thirty one cents would be the town share of those four invoices.
And what is his share?
Uh, the balance of that and twenty five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and nine cents.
Twenty five thousand, five hundred and nine.
That's the total.
Okay.
And then the town's is ten, eight oh three, thirty one.
So the total price is twenty five, five oh nine, what?
Oh nine.
Oh nine. And we're taking off ten, eight oh three, thirty one, and he owns, he owes the balance.
Correct.
Everybody comfortable with that? And that's to date?
To date.
So then when will you revise this for the future? I guess I want to have something in place here, so we all know what's happening here.
Well, at this point, the next big, um, effort will be when it gets paved.
Okay.
But it seems to me to make sense that the next time we look at, you know, a cost share analysis would be when the paving is done and we would include the engineering in that next time instead of having this separate
picking away.
Yeah.
And has he paid everything or have we been waiting for this?
We were waiting.
You're waiting for this, so this, so you owe us approximately fourteen thousand dollars or thirteen, eight, nine, eight, okay. Got it. All right, I will make a motion for the payment for engineering services on one forty fourth that we are sharing with the Oaks of St. Croix, Steve Vader. The total amount of the bills at, discussed at this meeting are twenty five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and nine cents. The town will be, be responsible for ten thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and thirty one cents. And Mr. Vader will be responsible for the balance.
Second.
Everyone agree to that and did I say it all right? Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that passes, so Steve, you should be set to go. Jeez, does that mean we're not going to see you till spring?
We can stop in.
Happy holidays, that's what I'm going to say to you, happy holidays. Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, preliminary plat for St. Croix Crossing, um, Western Highway thirty five. You're here with your preliminary plat, which is different than what you had showed us a couple of months ago, but similar to what you showed us last month. Um, so, um, we have, you just received your hard copies from, um, um, tonight from the engineering firm for this road and this plat, but there's still some questions regarding it and I, you know, I just think there's some things that we haven't discussed that probably need to be fleshed out here before we make a decision. But I'll let you start.
Okay, thank you. I'm Louis, I'm an engineer, owner of the property, Joe Bruceup is also here. We were here last month, um, informal talk. Since then we've revised the prelimit to include all of the property and we went to plan commission over here last week and received conditional approval there. So I think two of the main points of discussion on this were last time at one time we had the plan extending just to this quarter, quarter line, forty line. And that created some issues with some couple of lots that were not going to be built on immediately, it was at the request of the county that we did that. The county did not want to leave, you know, they wanted us to plow all the way to a forty line. Since then we have enlarged the plat to include one big lot, which again is not intended to be built on. But it satisfies the county's requirement to plow to the edge of the boundary and the forty line. It creates one big lot eleven that's seventy five acres that will be future development. The other thing we talked about was bike paths. The county wishes to have, friends, there are white paths now for future bike path coming up on Hudson and the loop trail, I believe they call it, I don't know a lot about it, but that was the other thing we talked about. So we provided on this version, we provided twenty foot wide bike path easements. Originally they were just on, excuse me. Originally we just had them on, uh, Highway thirty five. And they have now expanded, I'm going to flip this over to the same drawing with white paths highlighted in green. So now, same white path along Highway thirty five potentially. But the county's not sure if they can get the white path by the graves on cemetery, the Holden Cemetery. So they wanted an alternative easement. And maybe someday connect via subdivision, I'm guessing through uh, Dolphies, and then they also wanted an easement along Highway sixty four. Or this bike path. So those were the kind of two main discussion points in the last, uh, three meetings we've been to, the lots have remained virtually the same. And, uh, we still have Main Street, and that will extend in the future, we have a connection to the Dolphie property, we have the same cul-de-sac, we have we have trained, changed the names of the streets. County didn't like the name of our streets, uh, they're included. They're too common, I think, so we have now, what are they, you have Swedish names? Norwegian, sorry. Didn't mean to insult you like that. Kanjin Court, is that right? Did I say that right? Bisbon Street and Drininga Avenue. They're pronounced right, close up.
So I have to hear, are, are street names approved by the?
You gotta get closer to your mic, so Justin can hear you.
Our street names are actually approved by the town?
No, by the county.
By the county, okay.
We can put up an objection, but the county put up an objection because one of those names was already used in the county. And they don't like replication unless it's numbers. So like you're going to have one thirty first go across the whole county because it's all in the same line. But you can't have the name of something be the same as the name of in the next town, for instance, unless they're connecting roads. So.
Same principle applies to subdivision.
Yep, yep. So they're pretty straightforward about that. A couple of things, um, Jason from St. Croix County is coming back to see us in January. I really struggle with this alignment that they're asking you to take part in. Because coming up sixty four puts them at the roundabout. Which to me is brutal if you're trying to bike around that roundabout with kids. I, I just see that as just being unmanageable. I think it'd be cheaper to put a bridge across sixty four at thirty five and keep everybody off that busy intersection, but we haven't heard anything further from them and hopefully in January we will. Second of all, you've just had a recent meeting with the engineer and these plans that came out tonight, this is the first that we've seen them. So I would prefer to have you come back in January for approval of this and hopefully then we have everything in a row. Because the application that you submitted was with your other alignment of lots and I think this one is much better. But we need to have those hard copies here at the table for the road plan, stormwater and erosion control plans along with the plat, so, um, I just think we need to delay a month. How does rest of the board feel? These plans that you submitted, this road, whatever this is. This is eight pages and the last one you submitted was seven, which is what you based your comments off of. I just want to, I just want to clean it up and make sure we're all in the same place with this. And this just came out today, so the engineer really hasn't had a chance to look at it. Where's the rest of the board on this?
I, I feel that that's probably accurate because they're not looking at dirt work to me at all.
Right. Right.
I mean, it's not, it's not slowing down the project at all, it's just, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't like getting the, the date of the meeting.
Yeah.
You know?
Right, I, I just brought it for reference really when I spoke to Lee earlier in the week. Yeah, we kind of decided there's no way we can address all the comments, get into them for the review before tonight. So.
And it's fine, it's just business, you know, I mean, it's a fluid relationship.
Yeah. And.
And I, and I guess the, the big thing that's a real thing to trip over is that stupid bike path.
I'm struggling with that and I know I told you that the plan commission, that I'm really struggling that they want to put this major trail on our town roads or off of them or however you want to say it, because those would be our roads. And then they're going to take this thing up to sixty four to the roundabout? I mean, who's, who's, who's going around that roundabout on a bike with kids? Yes, sir. Yeah. And I talked to somebody who bikes a lot, a lot, a lot around here and they told me, they said those roundabouts are brutal there and they're just brutal. So I know they can't come across sixty four on thirty five because the bridge is not wide enough. But maybe you build another bridge next to it. Would that be cheaper? I mean, this is a lot of bike path to maintain.
The thing that bothers me about Jason's conversation and now it's in his development, it don't really belong in the, in the development.
No.
Out of this whole dream they got, it don't belong screwing with them.
And I'm with everybody who says it should have been on the west side of the road.
Yeah.
That's where the bike trail should have been.
Yeah.
Instead of crossing over the highway where they're, you know, now doing it in North, North Hudson. But that's water over the bridge. So let's delay you till January and have you come back and hopefully then you'll have all the ducks in a row. You're close.
We will get through our technical review comments.
Yep.
Stan Tech.
Yep.
And then whatever.
We can do all the bike path, right?
Right, I get that, but we're going to have that discussion with him because on the final plat, we're going to figure that out.
No, your plat's going to be your plat. Minus if we can elude.
Yes.
Tell me.
And so then whatever changes are made, we're going to need new hard copies for that.
Yes.
Okay. Just so we're all on the same page of the book.
And I will add, per one comment was to add the erosion control plan to the
Yep.
set plan, so that's why it's more big.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to delay, um, the St. Croix Crossing plat until January.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Uh, opposed, it passes, we'll see you in January. Have a nice Christmas.
Your.
I'll put Jenna's schedule for January for this meeting. No, just this meeting. You've already been to plan commissions, you just come to this meeting. Town board, yep. That's where you're at. January ninth. That's an early one. Yes, it is early. All right, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, Plan Commission is listed as January eighth, I apologize, never mind.
Right, it's the eighth, but the board is the ninth. With the day.
Oh, it is, it is, okay, it's one of those months, thank you.
Thank you. So update on hunting in the preserve. Um, we did meet. Dan and I met with the warden here with interested parties that abut the preserve. And his answers to us were pretty much, he feels that it is safe to hunt on the preserve on that almost eighty acres. It is not like, he, one of the things he mentioned was a bike trail over near Chippewa that is a fifty or sixty foot wide piece of land that's wide open because it was a railroad bed. That's more difficult because the minute you turn, you don't have enough depth to shoot a gun at, you'd have to shoot down the lane, so to speak. So he said in those cases, they don't feel that that's safe, but in this one, they felt that it was. Would you like to add anything to this?
I don't know, he said that basically that, that people that are following the rules for hunting can adequately hunt on that property safely. People that are following the rules.
Yes.
Um, they don't make rules to to stop bad hunters. They make rules to enable good hunters.
Yep. He did state that if they are having with people, having trouble with people trespassing on their property, they should be calling the county sheriff's office and I did make them aware that there are concerns there. Um, I didn't receive a reply back, which I didn't expect, but I just made the sheriff aware that we had that conversation. And I've not had any calls since hunting season opened a couple of weeks ago, it's a couple of weeks, yeah, a couple of weeks ago. So I have not had any comments or concerns since then.
I think one of, one of the more important comments he made though was that that trespassing is not a DMR violation.
Yes.
Trespassing is a violation that needs to be addressed by the, the county sheriff.
Sheriff, yep.
Yeah.
And there were comments made that, um, some of the residents were unhappy that we used Knowles Nelson Grant money to purchase that property, which enables hunting on it and that one of the comments made was that we should pay back the five or six hundred thousand that we've got from the state from that, so we would have full autonomy over that. The other thing that was mentioned is that we should be having someone man the parking lot and enforce who gets in and out of there and what they do. And I just said those are two things that are really out of sight of the budget of this town. So that may be brought before you in the future, so I'm just warning you. All right, we will move on, Town Hall. And we have Bruce online. And Bruce is here this morning for our, um, weekly meeting. We have a pay request for the building, it's, um, for a hundred and three thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents. That's work done to date. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Make a motion for the pay request, uh, number six for the building payment released at one hundred and three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, and it passes. Um, then we have update on furnishings, I am getting a quote on these tables, which is a little bit different than what we had in the quote from S S O S. Um, so that we have this panel on the front, which is gonna cost us about a hundred dollars a table, so we'll get that finalized, but that's coming to us. Um, St. Croix Electric rebates, Justin, have you heard anything on them yet? Justin?
Yeah, I was sorry, my mute, unmute button wasn't loading up. I have not heard anything from Dairyland Power yet. Uh, I can call them or we can have the office call them here to make sure that everything was received, but from my understanding that these things do take a little bit of time because these are treated more as a corporate bulk rebate.
So do you wanna call or do you wanna have Terry call him?
Um. Let's have Terry call him, because she'll have the latest invoice to authenticate. If you want, Terry, we can do it where I can join the call too.
He said, sounds good, she didn't hear her mic on.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, approve the quotes for Sunny Links, so if you remember last time, we only approved two of the three because there was questions about the third one. And he did revise it, he accidentally used a um, template that was a year old, unfortunately, and he apologized for that. So, um, is it the twenty twenty, or is it, which one is it, the eleven oh eight, I can never remember. It's the eleven zero zero eight, so this is in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and this includes our um, entire surveillance system in and out of the building. So I will make a motion to approve, um, estimate number one one zero zero eight for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to Sunny Link.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. And then change order number four, I will let, um, Bruce speak to that.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, change order number four includes the following, uh, the P C O nine nine two dash zero five is changing the manufactured masonry wainscot uh, that was specified to the Revard stone that was selected by the town. Um, P C O nine nine two dash zero six, which was in response to our proposal request number three, added the concrete pad for the generator, uh, gas line, uh, from the building gas service to the generator. Um, and additional rock mulch and steel landscape edging around the, uh, generator pad and the uh, other equipment pads on the south side of the building. Uh, it includes, uh, P C O nine nine two dash zero seven, uh, which was for proposal request number four, uh, which relocated the east high window in the town hall south wall. Uh, moved it further east to be a mirror image of the, uh, two windows on the south wall on the west side of the town hall space. Um, we added power and data for, uh, relocating the sound control system that's in the town hall space here uh, over to the town hall space in the new town hall. Um, and we revised the upper windows in the north wall from tinted to clear, uh, that was a credit. Um, and then we added power, uh, to the septic system pumps. Uh, it also includes a P C O nine nine two dash zero eight in response to proposal request number five uh, for providing, uh, entry canopy roof truss framing structural support clarifications. Um, they weren't, uh, very clear on the drawings that we issued and, uh, got comments back from Ron on exactly how they wanted that to be done, and we issued proposal request number five to clarify what needed to be done. Uh, it includes P C O nine nine two dash zero nine, uh, to provide the five inch stores fitting on the hydrant as requested by uh, Zach. Um, and then it all also includes a P C O nine nine two dash ten, uh, which was in response to proposal request number six, uh, to increase the size of the side light, uh, adjacent to the door, uh, leading into Terry's office. Uh, the total amount for change order number four is twenty five thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Anyone have any questions for him on this? It's all itemized out of the change order.
I'm just curious, how much, uh, were those canopy changes part of that, how much of the twenty five thousand were part of those canopy issues?
Uh, the canopy was two thousand, eight hundred and ninety five dollars.
Yep.
I have a real quick question about the mover, moving of that window.
Yes.
Yep. Um, and just give me a little leeway here, because I didn't, I'm having trouble framing it in my mind. Um, when we move that window, it's not going to be then covered up by one of the displays that comes down from the ceiling, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have a risk of us putting in a really nice window and then putting a TV right in front of it, so it doesn't superheat a television?
Correct.
Right, it's, it's actually gonna be further to the east, so it'll be way out of the way.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? I'll make a motion to approve change order. Did you say this is number four? Yes, number four.
Yes.
For twenty five thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars for the changes as stated on it. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and it passes. Um, so then projected expenses, and I have this on here because as long as you're on with us, um, Bruce, that
Yes.
the well owner was in today, and do you wanna turn your mic on so you can tell him what he dropped off?
Um, he dropped off the U S B, um, flash drives with the video on it.
Okay.
And he said the only thing that's outstanding is the water analysis, which they can't do until the building's built. So he said everything else is.
Because he can't get water out of it, he has to wait till it's hooked up to the building. So we have cut a check for him. Are you comfortable and is this board comfortable in paying him? And waiting for that water test to come back at the time that it's hooked up to the building? I mean, I pretty much am, but what do you think, Bruce?
Um, well, I, I believe Tim still owes us typed well log drilling reports.
I think that is, so she has. Oh, yeah, why don't you go grab it while he's online with us? So he said today when he dropped it off that everything was there except for the well water test.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
If, if that's a need.
Yeah, so, um, Lee just said that if you wanna see what he dropped off, he could bring it with him to the office tomorrow. It's multiple flash drives, should I just give it to Lee and you can take a look at it, Bruce?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, let's give it to Lee and and we'll just do it that way. Um, is the board okay if we wait until Bruce, uh, Bruce takes a look at that and gives us the okay to release the check then?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then we'll get the water tested in the spring? Or winter, whenever they get hooked up?
Oh, well. When the building is ready to be occupied is when you can do the task.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll just release it then and go on from there. Um, you have the new updated building project spreadsheet, does anyone have any questions on this? All of the, um, change orders are on here. So you can see where we're at. We have, we've gotten a couple of bills from Northwest, but none to include any Wi-Fi hookup. So I don't know if we'll be charged for that or not until they actually hook us into the building, they may charge us then. Otherwise, that's where we're at.
My understanding from talking to the project manager on the Northwest invoice would be, it would be the same as a new hookup, which is three hundred dollars as a new install.
That would be perfect since I've budgeted a thousand.
I can confirm that with them later, but that's my understanding that they would treat it as. And then the day that they, we do the hookup is the day that they'll cut the old building over to the new building and turn the new building on at the same time, so we have to just schedule it kind of carefully.
Okay. Um, anything else from anybody on it? All right, then I'll move on. We have not received a pay request from the sanitary system up installation. I'll continue to put that on our agendas as we move forward, so that when it does come in, it's already on there and we're ready to go, but at this time, according to Terry, we've not received a word. Anything else in the building from anybody? Hopefully the roof goes on next week. That's the intent.
Yep, that's the plan.
And then the last thing I have on here is the build out of the fire hall, that was change order number three. I don't believe we approved that, I think that's on this month to actually, we, we approved it in concept, we didn't actually approve the actual change order, correct, Bruce?
That's correct.
Okay, and what is that, that amount is what, sixteen?
Sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty two dollars.
And they hopefully are gonna get to it right after the first of the year is what it sounded like today, Zach.
Yep.
Um, they're kind of stretched with Christmas and New Year's being in the middle of the weeks. So I'll make a motion to approve change order three for sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty two dollars for the change out, uh, for the build out in the fire hall.
Second.
Um, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes, and so that is also worked into this budget worksheet. So I'm hoping that this is kind of towards the end of a lot of change orders, I'm hoping we have one minor one from today's meeting that, um, we decided um, we're gonna, um, have Bruce do a change order for a fourplex um, plug on the outside of the front of the building, otherwise each side has a double and we'll go from there, otherwise I don't think there was anything else. Chris and Dan were at the meeting this morning, am I forgetting anything or is that it?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, now that we are done with the well, do we already have the pipe out front for the fire hydrant?
The hydrant's in.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, it just doesn't have the connection on it that Zach wanted, and that's the change, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, the, that was in the change order.
No, requested.
Did you hear that, Bruce? I, you couldn't hear that, so Zach
No.
stated that originally we had asked for that connection. Was that not on the documents?
Yep, somehow that didn't get included in the, uh, original bidding documents and
Okay.
and that's why it's included in change order four.
That's fine. You know, we gotta do it, I mean, it's just what happens. Yeah. Twenty three hundred. Isn't everything right now more than you think? I know. Okay, anything from anyone else on this? Um, we're gonna go to talk about no parking signs then for Public Works. The only thing I have on here for Public Works. So I am letting the board know that, um, seven of our signs were stolen off of Nelson Farm Lane, the no parking tollway signs, including the ten foot posts. They were. See, this is why you come, Nick, and so you can hear these things. Um, they were just stolen sometime between Thanksgiving evening and Saturday early morning. Um, I was informed Saturday, I went and took pictures on Monday and called the sheriff's office and filed a complaint. Um, they stole seven signs, they're in front of five residences. Um, as you drive down the lane, not the road, but the lane, you will come to um, Spangenberg's and Laird's and the people around the cul-de-sac all have signs, but the five properties prior to that do not. They had to be taken out with some sort of equipment is what I was told, because they're three to three and a half feet in the ground. You can't see where they, they didn't dig them out because there's no digging anywhere in the ditch, you can see that they just pulled them.
They did a great job.
They did a great job pulling them out. So I'm asking the board approval tonight to order the new signs and the new posts, which are um, about, you know, let's see, they're twenty seven, twenty five, they're about sixty one dollars a piece plus another hundred to put them in. So we can get them back in. I just towed people on what day is Saturday, thank you, I just told people again on Saturday down there. They had the cul-de-sac.
Was that a motion I should second?
Well, no, I just was saying that I, I did tow people down in the cul-de-sac on Nelson Farm road on Saturday because they were blocking the cul-de-sac with trucks. And I'm sure they were hunting. No offense to hunters, I married one, but you can't be blocking roads with these vehicles, so. Um.
I do have one question about the reinstallation.
Yes.
Do we have to pay a premium now that the ground is mostly frozen?
We'll wait until spring.
Yeah, we can wait till spring on that if we want, but we definitely, I wanted to get them ordered in, in the sheds, they're ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take a motion to replace the signs.
I make a motion to replace the missing signs from Nelson Farm Lane.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
I think we should change it from missing to stolen.
Oh.
Correct.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. So just so you know, the, the police report, the sheriff's report was filed, they have spoken to some of the people, but two of the people he really wants to speak to are out of town. And he intends to keep our case open until he speaks to them.
The signs include a solar panel that powers the camera that goes on top of the sign.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, it's, people are working hard, that's all I can say. Um, anything else on the no parking signs? Um, we'll go on to Willow River State Park, I don't really have anything on there, but I kept it on there just in case anything had come back from the park, but I think, Dan, you said we're pretty much quiet right now.
Yeah, I did talk with, um, Aaron Mason after our board meeting last month, and he was very pleased that we would support the smaller parking lot off of River Row, and he said he would follow up with us. Um, anything that they wanna move forward with.
Perfect. Perfect. You know, it's interesting where all these people were on the road hunting with what I presume are hunters. The parking lot was open, there wasn't anybody in the parking lot, I thought, well, hmm, you can go park over there. Are you here for something, sir, in the back row? Okay.
I have curiosity.
Got the better of you?
Or in the solve, but. Curiosity is.
Good, thank you so much for coming then. All right, on to Parks, Trails and Rec. First of all, you're gonna stick around for this and then I'll let you go. Um, the Parks, Trails and Rec Committee has asked for signage for the preserve. They want signage on the road on Valley View pointing to where the preserve is. The cost of those signs is a hundred and thirty five dollars a piece. Um, plus posts. So. I ta, I said that wrong, I picked the wrong number, sorry. Thirty eight dollars, thirty eight sixty five a piece plus posts. So.
And there is money in the park budget still to do this, and they're okay with them waiting for springtime to put them in.
I think that would be easier for us to wait till then. Okay.
And they're only requesting those two signs and no other signs anywhere.
Not any or anything, just on Valley View.
Yep.
Do you wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the signage request for the preserve from the park committee.
Um, I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Justin?
You're on mute.
Yep, I'm good with it.
Okay, that motion carried, thank you. So then transfer impact fees for parks, so, um, and I don't know why I don't have that sheet. Is it here? I don't have it, wait, no. It's that one, isn't it? Okay, you should have had this at your spot for impact fees. So our cost for the impact for the, um, parks this year was fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy nine dollars and twenty seven cents for that new equipment and the rain garden and all, and the bridge and all that stuff that we had to install. Does the board wanna use any or transfer any or part of that from impact fees to cover those costs?
Yeah.
So do you, do you recommend just a partial or do you recommend a hundred percent?
That is.
That is completely up to the board. You know, I, you probably wanna think about other potential projects in the future, if you wanna save any for that, otherwise I I don't know that I have a an valid opinion on.
valid opinion on that small amount.
I don't think we need to do it to balance the, or to balance the park's budget for the year and all.
No, but I also feel that you should be using your impact fees as you go along because you don't want them sitting there and not being used.
What was the dollar amount again?
They spent fourteen, four seventy-nine and cents this year, and we have eighteen, eight fifty-eight in the, in the bank, in the bank. That's on the sheet in the bank. So we could use part of it, all of it. I mean, what in the future are they going to spend money on that's going to be using those impact fees? It has to be an addition of some kind. And I don't see any additions or improvements here that would use that.
I'd say you're right based upon today's date.
Yes. And that's what I'm looking at because the trail now is being collected.
Part of the Parks Committee for a very short period of time, but things always seem to pop up.
But it's different as a maintenance item as opposed to something new because you can't use it for maintenance.
That's where we're coming from there.
Justin, go ahead.
I was going to ask, would anyone, would it be fine if we just did like seventy-five hundred dollars from impact fees? Just do roughly fifty percent, was that forty-eight percent of the total charge that would be eligible to use? I mean, are you looking for something like that where we could still have impact fees in there in case there's a new project that comes up in twenty-five?
We're still going to be collecting.
And we're still collecting, yeah.
Might as well just use it.
I mean, what do you think?
I'd like the seventy-five hundred dollar idea.
Well, one of you make the motion.
I'll make a motion to, for the town to transfer seventy-five hundred dollars of the impact fees associated for parks to the town budget for the twenty-twenty-four budget year.
Second.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. So you have that, that you can do seventy-five hundred. All right, now we will let you go. Thank you for saving for that. We appreciate it. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. There's Christmas cookies over on the counter if you walk that direction. Just. Thank you, Lee. We appreciate it. All right, so parks, junkyards and other chronic nuisances and enforcement issues. How's it been, Jay? I'm going to bring you up to the table because you're, or else take the mic with you so Justin can hear you. And Anton's online too, so both of them need to hear you. I know. Well, you can go there with a mic and just have it in your hand. I think it's on. Yeah.
So junkyards, nothing new that we're aware of.
Okay.
Nothing improved that we knew of. Not much.
Okay, good. Then we'll move on if you don't have anything, any big enforcement issues that you know of. You might want to hang on to that. We might get you later, so. Okay. Up to the ordinances. The first one is chapter sixty-four, which is animals. And I did send a note to our attorney regarding those two questions, Anton, that came up at the plan commission meeting about those two things having to do with some wording that was in there. And the first one, um, let's see, under definitions of a vicious animal, it said, should intrinsic characteristics be deleted? And your answer was yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, only because that is a very difficult, undefined term to enforce.
Yeah, so it's under vicious animal, so it's just those two. And it's hard to enforce it. It's just, it's due to its intrinsic characteristics, so we would delete that. And then I asked him because it was brought up under A of that, that upon due cause, an animal may be declared vicious by the animal control officer, county sheriff or town board. And it was brought up as to whether the town board had the ability or understanding to make that determination. And you said, yes, they do.
Yeah, my, my view on that piece of it is that it is that it's the town board or its designee.
Yeah.
Whether that designee be the sheriff's deputy, whether it be the animal control officer, whether it be somebody else that is acting as an authorized agent on behalf of the town board.
Okay.
So I think the town board is the right language.
Okay.
And then that, that designate add is necessary in order to extend that authority to whomever is acting on the town's behalf.
So instead of stating animal control officer, county sheriff or town board, it should say vicious by the town board or its designee.
Correct.
Did you catch that? Terry? Town board or designee. Anton, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Anything from anyone else on this ordinance? That's all that came out at the plan commission for those two items that I said would run by Nick. So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty, chapter sixty-four, animals, with the two changes we made tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call vote.
Justin Cruz? Dan Gavin?
Right.
Chris Marshall?
Aye.
Teresa Johnson?
Aye, motion carried. Then the second one that came out to us was lakes and waterways. And you have both a red line and a lot of it was just, and Anton, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of it was just bringing it up to today's language in the statutes, et cetera, correct?
That's right, and making it consistent with some of our other statutes as well in terms of definitions.
Yeah, so it just works with the other ones well. Anyone want to make that motion?
I make a motion to approve chapter one twenty-three, lakes and waterways.
You have to say the ordinance number ahead of it.
Ordinance two zero two four dash two one.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Another roll call.
Teresa Johnson?
Yes.
Chris Marshall?
Yes.
Dan Gavin?
Right.
Justin Cruz?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. All right, under, out to the liquor license application. This is for a change from Consumer Co-op is now being owned by Six Toes LLC.
Is that three and three or six?
I know, Six Toes. They, they actually looked them up. They are incorporated in the state as an LLC. Because I think Michelle was a little concerned when she saw that, and so she did do it, and they did pay their fees. Okay? And nothing came back negative on their background checks. Okay.
And this is which location again?
The Consumer Co-op in Burkhart.
In Burkhart, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So they don't get to so-called transfer. They actually have to buy the license. Yeah. So anyone want to make that approval for their liquor license? And this would be for one, one of twenty-five.
I make a motion for the liquor license approval for Six Toes LLC, formerly known as Consumer Co-op.
Is.
Effective January first of twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and it passes. Okay, the two operator licenses, yeah, there's two operator licenses on there and their background checks are over there. Did everyone get a chance to take a look?
I make a motion to approve the operator licenses for Derek Eversen and Erica Ward for Big Guys Barbecue.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed and it passes. And then we have three kennel licenses. They were all inspected over there by our animal control.
I make a motion to approve the kennel licenses for Jennifer and Gareth Vaniverse at thirteen eighty-three Thirty-first Street, Holton. I make approval for kennel license for John and Kimberly Gilbertson at thirteen seventy-five Fox Ridge Trail, Holton. Approve the kennel license for Mary Tyson and John Ringhopper at three seven six one hundred and seventeenth Avenue Hudson.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed, it pass. So then I have on here that we normally set our meeting for the review of contractors and employees of the town such as Jay for January. And so I put that on here that Terry and I looked at the calendar and came up with January, Thursday, January twenty-third. How does that work for everybody? Oh, for goodness sakes, so we have to do you at a different time. Can we do you after the January board meeting? Are you going to be around on the ninth? Okay, well, do you want to do that? Do him on the ninth and everybody else on the twenty-third?
Fine.
All right, so that's what I'll set up and I'll get the agenda out. Thank you, Jay, for letting me know. Hopefully, everybody else will be ready to go. Terry, public records requests and progress on that.
I've only had one for recordings, one request. That was it. That was fine.
So it slowed down. That's nice to hear. And then Terry would like to talk to you about closing the office on December twenty-sixth, which is a Thursday. We're already closed on Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yep, I just wanted to request that day off mainly for my two deputies. They like to go up to their cabins and, and enjoy their families, and I will still be around. So if you would approve them having the day off with pay, I would appreciate that.
Right.
As part of their holiday.
I make them.
I'm just making sure that everyone knows that she's still be monitoring.
Yeah, I'll still be around monitoring emails and everything.
All right, go ahead.
I make a motion to close the office for December twenty-sixth.
Is there a second? Justin, you seconded?
I did.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes.
Thank you.
Make sure that Stan Tech and Burkhart know about it.
I will.
And she'll put it on the website too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, change the website too.
Yeah, she can put it on there so it says that they're closed.
Yeah.
Except by email. So if somebody needs something, they can email her.
I make motion to approve the town board minutes for November fourteenth and November nineteenth of twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Go ahead.
Aye. Opposed and it passes. And then budget invoices, et cetera. Anyone have any questions concerning them? So a couple of things I want to say in regard to them is that we, oh, that's the next thing on the budget, so I'm going to wait. Sorry. You got everything on there. Do you want me to make that motion for the? I gotta grab it.
So it's my understanding we, if we're going to do any line item transfers for this year, twenty twenty-four, we'll do that through January meeting.
Yep, that's what I put on here so everyone knows what that's going to happen. So on number, oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I did not put it on there. That's what twenty-one is. So we've been doing that in January is doing those line item transfers. And then hopefully we have a full board because we'll need two-thirds vote on that. Because it's a budget change and we'll know where we are. For instance, Zach is using some of that loan money, so we have to transfer on his side of things. So that all has to get done then. Thank you. All right, I'll make a motion to approve checks number two five five two H through two five five four five, including fund transferred and epays. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. And that motion carried. And then the last thing we have to check on about bills and payments is Terry wishes to speak to us about our credit card bill. And the timing of that. So you would like to speak to that.
Yeah, so last month, I sent the check to the Visa card and they didn't either receive it or didn't post it until it was late. And so they charged us a late fee. And we got that reversed. We had to email them. It was kind of a deal. But anyway, we emailed them. They reversed the charges and credited us back. But I'm just wondering if the board would approve us to, you know, if we can do an automatic payment of the minimum and then we send a check for the rest. So we're not late and there's a payment made. Or if we can pay it online or whatever the board would like to do. So that we're not late.
The payment this month, the minimum would have been thirty-four dollars.
Yeah.
So we could have the minimum taken automatically from our checking account. And then we could pay the difference and you would still see the credit card bill and see the payment. So you have control over that.
I think just pay the whole thing on mine.
Well, he's going to have it.
Well, no, but I'm okay with paying it. What is, I would not set it if it doesn't exceed a maximum amount.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry, you have to wait until Dan is done talking.
What is the average credit card? I mean, I don't know, every time much is it?
It's been as high as four thousand dollars.
Yeah, it can get, it can get up there.
That's an exception.
Yeah.
That's why I said if you pay the minimum, you can do the rest by check. And then you have control over it.
Are you okay with that? It's more complicated doing that.
I mean, it's a little more work, but it would be fine if we just, then we just have to subtract out the, the minimum payment and then do the check for the rest.
Yeah.
Is this the first time it's ever happened that a payment can tip off the board?
Um, no, it's happened before, but they're starting to get a little more stringent with their reversals of fees. And I'm just afraid that if that happens again, we're just going to keep getting fees and.
I guess it's I guess it's open for discussion here.
All right.
I'm going to discuss it right here. I trust our clerks currently.
I can have a long discussion with you.
Yeah, Dan can have a long discussion about that.
You've educated me about that, but currently, that's why I threw that word in there.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Yes.
So if we, if we do something where we approve like a transfer, could we do the same thing where you, we approve the transfer just like we would approve a transfer here or a check? But then the payment is made via their online portal, just so we don't rely on, oh, it didn't make it to the post office the correct day or someone didn't deliver it to the right space or whatever. Would it be possible for us to acknowledge a quote unquote payment on the, on the checks and transfers sheet? But pay it electronically?
You're talking about paying electronically the whole same.
Yep.
And that's something you can consider doing too. I just knew that boards in the past, after what we had been through with the one clerk, wanted to see that check and wanted to see that bill. Am I wrong in saying that, Dan? I, you mean, you were in the middle of that. That's what you wanted to see.
Adults here, that's.
Yeah, but the, the flip side of it is I think we've all experienced that companies have gotten a lot slower about processing paper checks.
It can be listed on the check register because we can do it.
Right.
The day of the board meeting or whatever, because we print that check register the day of the board meeting.
Because you're having to pay here to the United States Treasury and the Department of Revenue. Those are always on there.
Yeah.
And the due date is always after our board meeting, correct?
It's the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Why don't we just make a motion once, once it's approved, just to pay it electronically versus a check?
Yeah, I can do that too.
You could do that.
Because I can do it the day that, I can do it the day after the board meeting every month.
Laura, you wanted to weigh in?
Yes, please. I, I solved this on my own personal accounts and how I solved it, and I'm just going to tell you what the number is. So rather than messing around with thirty-four and forty-three and all these other things, I figured out what my average bill was going to be every month, knowing full well that X amount of accounts were always going to be on there. And what I did, because I'm a car, is probably talking some smaller numbers. But anyway, I set mine up that I have an automatic amount. I set mine up that I have an automatic amount that went in shortly after the bill. So like December fourth. I automatically have a thing that goes in every single month. For one hundred dollars that covers that minimum, so you don't don't get the thirty-five or fifty-dollar charge. And then you know that it's an even amount, and Terry doesn't have to be figuring out what she's gonna, what the remaining balance is gonna be coming in, but either way, you've got that covered. And that would be my suggestion is cover it that way and then. And then she can still pay it electronically or however you want her to do it. And it's worked ver- I've been doing it for fourteen months and it works very well. And you're gonna run into what you're gonna run into with credit card companies, and they can do that. Is, as Terry already said. They will reach the point that they're not going to reverse any in particular finance charges. And then you could run into where you have finance charges on a hangover balance from the month before. So it can get, when you're talking the balances that the town potentially could have, you're talking a quite a bit of money that you're gonna be sitting on, because it's the life of your. Credit card for the amount of reversals that they will do. So that's my two cents worth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I kind of agree with what you said, though, Dan, is to have that come before the board and we approve that. Being taken out of the check, being an automatic. You know, e-pay after the board meeting. Because our due date's the twenty-fifth.
Three, yeah.
So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that the town clerk um going forward. Pays our uh town credit card bill via electronic payment. Once it has been approved by the town board and for the amount that the town board approves.
Second.
Terry, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. And that passes. And then the last thing.
Then maybe going forward, why don't you make sure that every month we know? That. We'll we'll mention what that amount is.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah, I'll just put the bill on the credit card.
And we'll just, as part of our motion, and say one one bill which would be paid like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that sounds.
That would work.
Then the other thing I have in here is approval of payment of bills prior to the end of the year for categories that are under budget, we've done this in the past. We always do our normal utilities, but if there are any bills that are coming in that are within our budget, we've always given the office. And myself or whoever signs the checks, the ability to sign those before the end of the year and take them out of the budget. Um, I know you still have a couple of things that you're looking at for that sixteen thousand that was left over on the loan, so if he can get those out yet this year, we can pay for them. So is the board okay with that, and if so, you can make a motion that you allow us to do that as long as it's within budget or within that loan amount. Are you okay or not?
I make a motion. To allow the town clerk to uh to approve the payments of bills prior to the end of the year for categories that are under budget, including normal utilities.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, and that passes. So then I have a quick question to ask before we go into closed session. Um, Nick, can we turn off the recording and allow Justin to remain on the? Um. Zoom meeting with us, or does he have to go?
Yeah, no, he can stay.
He can stay. Did you hear that, Justin, you can stay on, um, but we're gonna shut off the. Um, recording here as soon as we do this motion for closed session. I'll take a motion for the closed session.
Make a motion for closed session, Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. G conferring. With legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by the body. With respect to litigation in which it is. Or is likely to become involved, trash burning, animal control, agent club. Illegal campground.
Second.
Second. Second, from Justin?
I seconded.
Okay, roll call vote.
Dan Gavin?
Aye.
Teresa Johnson?
Aye.
Justin Cruz?
Aye.
Chris Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carried, and so now I'm gonna stop the record.